Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, as we bow our heads before Thee tonight as members of council and residents of Cardston, we ask that Thy Spirit will be with us today as we talk about the different items on the agenda, especially our Heritage Days. May we be visual and responsible as we speak about the actions that we want to see or want to do or desire to do. May we be very careful in what we do and the decisions we make considering this COVID-19 pandemic. Bless this area, bless our community, and those individuals in our community. Keep us safe, Father. Let us go on. And these blessings we ask for humbly in the name of Thy sacred Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
All right, so it's 5:00, and today is the 7th of July.
Mayor, I'm just gonna phone Counselor Court. Apparently, I'm gonna phone myself.
We are going to have Counselor Court come online. He's on holiday, but wants to be here. So, welcome to all. And we're thankful for the media.
And the presses here.
Yes. We have Temple City Star.
Hello. Hey, Counselor, we're going in your life.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Counselor.
Right.
And we have Channel 4. Thank you so much for being there. And we have actually people in a gallery today, which is wonderful. We have Dr. Strang. We have Zinnis. I think Dr. Strang represents the Lions, and Zinnis, you represent the Rotary? Am I correct?
I can do that.
Okay, good. And then we have a member of the community, Mrs. Atwood. And so, we will hear from Counselor Brown later on. All right, so we have an agenda that really is going to focus on Heritage Week events, and we have a few extra items there. So, we need to adopt that agenda. Counselor Bengey?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Yes.
So, we have a delegation. So, Counselor Brown, help me. Is the delegation going to address us now? Or?
Is the Rotary, had they planned on saying anything? They called me with the information. Did you have more to add?
No, actually, I'm probably representing the Rotary Club, probably representing Imagination Unlimited and the Lions Club.
Okay.
She's the president of the Lions Club.
Okay, all right. So, that clarifies a little bit. So, we have no delegation today? Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, there are no minutes to adopt. We will do that next week. And by law, there are none. So, Counselor Brown, I'm going to turn it over to you. We had at the last meeting, we had a motion that struck the idea of a committee of yourself and Counselor Court and two members of the community and administration. Help us understand how this went.
Can I go ahead and present?
Please.
Awesome. I'm gonna stand, because I'm a pacer.
Yes? Oh, okay.
One second.
Yep. Can I do?
Okay.
Okay, so, just to be clear, this council, we requested that we come up with a new game plan, a COVID-friendly game plan for Heritage Week. And so, myself and Counselor Court, who is here by phone, and we also have Candace Atwood, and I have about 50 other people that we counseled with in regards to, can y'all see? Sorry. In regards to Heritage Week and what we could do on this week. That would be AHS-approved. So, just to be clear, everything we're gonna talk about would have to be AHS-approved. So, we know this, but we're going to, just, these are the ideas that we have brainstormed as a team. And let's start with our theme. The theme that we came up with for Heritage Days is Ikakimut, which is, which is, which is Blackfoot, which means "hope," never give up, which we thought, we loved it because that is kind of what our heritage comes from. Heritage Days is all about never giving up. From our pioneers to the First Nations people that were on this land, they never gave up. They had bad weather, they had hard times, they kept being positive and moving forward. And we feel like because of COVID and what it's done to our community, we don't want to give up. We want to honor these people, and we want to do something to bring economic growth and development into our businesses on Main Street. So, these are just some of the ideas that we've come up with. So, let's start with the first one.
See Candace?
There you go.
I did that one. So, I forgot her. What? Cut it upside down.
Are we good? Okay. So, the very first one is we talked to Janet Wild, and she is over the farmer's market. And so, we suggested, when we talked to her, we thought, wouldn't it be great? Because we've been hearing a lot from the community that they want a farmer's market. But due to COVID stipulations, we haven't been able to have an indoor farmer's market, which they usually do at the Remington Center. And so, we talked to her, and she's all about doing some sort of farmer's market at the Remington Center parking lot outside, if it rains, up against the building, but doing something so that people can get their fresh vegetables and everything. So, I'm starting with Friday. So, Friday, August 7th, we're talking about having an outside farmer's market. The next one is Yard of the Week. So, as you know, over the years, we've done Communities in Bloom, has done Yard of the Week. And we thought it would be really fun to do, to continue to do that, but do it with a tweak. So, maybe we do, maybe we do themes, different themes. So, we have different yards and different themes, and we come up, the whole week, they decorate their yard, and they compete like Counselor Barnes does at Christmas. We do the same sort of thing for Heritage Week. The next one. So, this one is kind of, this one's kind of a fun one. So, I don't know if you're aware, but during COVID, a bunch of people have gotten together with their kids, and they've hid and painted rocks all over Cardston. And then, they take pictures of them, and they post them on Facebook in this little rock group, and then, they praise each other, and then, they go and hide it for the next person to find it. And then, they'll go home and paint one of their own, and they'll go ahead and hide it. And that's kind of a really fun Cardston new tradition that has been started. And when I was at Atkins, talking to Chris McDoanell, she said, we were trying to come up, we were just thinking of outside-the-box thinking. And she said, wouldn't it be fun? She's like, I would offer my front window to have different rocks that have been painted and lined up, and people could come and vote for them. Or something, something along those lines. So, you're just walking past her window, you're just walking past her window, you look at the rocks. The other thing we were thinking about doing is, what if council, we paint rocks, maybe it's three rocks, and we hide them all over the little footpaths and wherever, everywhere but the temple. We hide them all over Cardston, so the kids can find them, and if they get their picture taken with two rocks, three rocks, whatever it is, they get a whatever, a slurpee, because really, this is about the kids. So, we just thought that was a fun way of involving the kids into this week. And that could go week-long. The next one, the next one counts. In regards to a pickleball tournament. Now, pickleball has gotten really huge in this community. And when I say tournament, I'm sure you're thinking COVID-friendly, and that's absolutely what pickleball would be. Of course, there would have to be stipulations in place of social distancing, hand washing, but I don't know if you're familiar with pickleball, but, you know, you're not right next to each other, you're separated. And this is something that we could do, keeping within the county, because we have to have only members of our community and county. It can't be Joe Blow from Tabor, Lethbridge, wherever. It has to be from within our community. And Gib Shaffer was super excited to help with that. The next one is softball. Now, you're thinking, again, the whole tournament thing, but actually, men's league is already playing, and they are social distancing, and Ben Court did get the approval by AHS to, again, within these guidelines, within these tweaking of the rules, they were able to play. So, it would be co-ed games. The next one. This one's pretty fun. So, this is the vintage car drive-by, right? And we talked to Alan Klein for this. And this was kind of a fun idea. I can't remember who came up with it, but I can't claim it. In some, in one of our meetings that we talked, somebody came up with the idea of how cool would it be to take these vintage vehicles and drive by, like the Lee Crest or the Grand View, or different areas where the seniors have been so homebound, but they could come outside or look from their windows, and we could have drive-bys for them. Apparently, when the ambulance and the county, not the county, sorry, the ambulance and the fire crew got together and they did their driveabouts, apparently, the seniors were all over that.
It was great.
Awesome.
They came by my place, too.
And so, we were thinking of, and so, we were thinking of, while, while doing that, we could have them go throughout the town. Like, there's no way they just need to have one direct route. These guys are all about showing off their fabulous cars. So, we could come up with some sort of, I don't know, somewhere in Cardston, come up with a game plan of the drive-bys, or maybe you sign up for it on your street. The next one. This one's pretty fun. This one is the drive-in movie. I'm a movie girl, and I'm all about the movie. And I grew up going to drive-in movies. We talked to the Agro Dome about having, because we needed a place. In years past, they have done picnic in the park with a movie down at the Remington Center. But because of the social distancing, that one's a tricky one. And so, we looked at different aspects, and we came up with, well, if I'm in my car, I could be right next to Candace and, you know, chucking popcorn at her, and it's all good because we're social distancing. Meanwhile, we're watching the movie, and we talked to them out at the Agro Dome, and they were excited. They've got a south parking lot where we've got electricity. I've talked to the people about everything we need, and it looks like that would be something super fun that we could do. Again, that would be Friday night. The next one. So, this one, this one is actually Jeff came up with this idea, and I love it and fully support it. So, Counselor Court worked really hard at doing the Veterans' New Monument over here on the corner. And Jeff came up with the idea of, what if we put a flagpole there? And we put the Blackfoot Confederate?
Confederacy.
Confederacy? Yep, butchered it. Flag. Thanks, Tim. If we put that flag up there, we thought that would be a really honor to have it there as it should be with all the rest of our flags. And so, we'll thank Jeff for that. He was, we're just gonna leave it at seeing how council thinks about it, and we thought it would be kind of a great tribute during our Heritage Week. So, we're cost, we're getting cost on that. We don't have the cost on that one. Stay at this one. So, the next one also is First Nations Exhibition Dance. Now, the mayor, she has done the pow-wow and has been a huge supporter of that, and I love that. But of course, during COVID, this has been canceled. But I talked to some of the dancers and some of the people that are involved with this, and they thought it might be cool to have a First Nations Exhibition Dance, which essentially is just having drummers and then having a few dancers. Now, bear with me. So, when we talk about doing this, we were thinking of possibly doing it at Town Square. Now, obviously, it's not going to be during softball, because that's awkward. But it would be in a time, and maybe it's late earlier in the week, where we have the drummers in the center of Town Square, and then, all four sides of Town Square, we have different dancers throughout it. And they're, they're, they're showing their costumes, they're doing their fancy dance, they're, all sorts of their dances, which we love. And it's part of our Heritage Week because we were used to having the pow-wow. So, that was a thought. Can we come back to that?
Yeah.
Perfect. So, the next one, the next one is the golf tournament. So, golf, the next, yep, sorry, you're right. Go to the next one.
Horses?
No, right? That's a new aspect. Go back. There, there.
It's called polo.
One more. There we go. Okay, so now, we're at Saturday. So, Saturday morning, we talked to the Rotary. I talked to Sharon Jensen. She is the one that the Rotarians have put over the parade, her with her group. And we've talked to them, I've been talking to Skylar and them for about a month on what we could do, what it would look like. We talked to Raymond, we've talked to different communities that have had different aspects, whether it was a drive-by parade, which they did in Raymond, or just different aspects of how we could social distance. So, essentially, all I'm going to say on the parade is, the Rotarians are on this, they're working on it, they're meeting again tomorrow, and she said they would come up with their game plan by then. So, essentially, they want to do something. That's where it was left, and they're waiting to hear how council votes tonight. The next one. So, this one is the businesses on Main Street. The biggest thing I heard when we talked to different businesses on Main Street was, if we don't have Heritage Week, is that a problem for you? And the biggest thing we heard back was, yes, we have suffered through the economic upheaval of COVID, and we need people coming to Cardston. With the border being closed, just people in Cardston doing things, spending money, whatever it is that they want, we would love to have on our Main Street. We want the foot traffic. And so, we were thinking of, of course, every year, lots of the businesses, not all of them, but a few of them, do their street, they do their sidewalk sales. And so, that's them supporting us. I also talked to Terrence Kemp in regards to what they wanted to do, the chamber, what the chamber wanted to do, but he said they were stepping back on this, that they weren't going to do anything that week. So, that's fine. The next one. This is the outdoor rodeo. So, we talked to the Agro Dome just to see what stipulations, what is possible, and I'm sure Counselor Drew could speak more to this later, but essentially, what they told us is they're looking at doing an outdoor event, an outdoor rodeo, and it's in the process. They want to do something. That's the moral of this story. And so, now, by Saturday, of course, we're finishing the pickleball tournament, we're finishing the softball. The other thing we would have, whether it would be Friday or Saturday, would be the golf night tournament, and that they do with the glow-in-the-ball, glow-in-the-dark balls.
Glow-in-the-dark ball.
Thank you. And they shoot them all over the place, and good luck finding them. But that is a huge draw for Cardston. Last year, I was told that they made $1,000 bucks in one night from it. So, it's a great draw to our area. And lastly, of course, is, you know, evening spectacular, wouldn't be spectacular without our fireworks. And so, the question then became, well, how can we do fireworks? Because, you know, our families are too close together on our blankets. And so, in the communities that I talked to that have already done this, they just stipulated to be wise. They want people to be wise, whether you want to stay in your vehicle, so whether Counselor Bengey and his wife want to be in their vehicle at the top of the hill, that's fine. Or if I want to be on a blanket with my family in front of my vehicle, it's fine. But we just need to be aware of it. So, I guess I will open this up. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Candace? Counselor Court, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think you've covered it pretty good. I did talk to Alan Klein and Loreen Bear at the Chinook. They're looking forward to people coming by, they're quite excited about that. Ben is up here with me right now, we've been talking softball, how he's gonna get that done. And I watched the Raymond Parade, they cut out from both angles, it worked quite well, so the Rotarians should have no problem setting that up. And I'm up in Banff right now, and there's been native dancing on the street here. So, it's, it's a popular thing, and there's been doing it. Something pretty good.
Awesome.
And I think that, let me look through here. I think that's covered pretty good. Thank you.
Awesome. So, go ahead.
First of all, Counselor Brown, I want to thank you for the amazing amount of work you've done on this topic. And it brings smiles to my face to think there are much of this that can really happen, I really think. So, thank you so much for all the hard work and all those who worked with you for coming up with those ideas.
Thank you.
I really think that what we need to understand is a budget that is needed to kind of work all that, because as you know, council is all about money and approving money. So, there has been money set aside for this week. Just wondering if you have any idea of?
I do.
What is needed?
So, everyone we talked to, none of it is outside our normal spending. So, everything that's been budgeted for, we've already budgeted for the parade, we've already budgeted for different things. I'm not looking at spending anything outside that budget.
Are you, how are you going to define the spending? How are you going to kind of come up with an idea?
So, first of-
So, each organization is going to provide you with their estimate of the cost?
So, first of all, I'm not doing all of this, which is why I gave the people's names of all of these things. So, in years past, they, I don't know, how does the, how do the Rotarian, Rotarians get their money for the parade? They just submit to you?
Yeah, yeah, we know it's an annual economy.
Yeah, so this doesn't have anything to, that part doesn't have anything-
It doesn't bother you at all?
That doesn't involve me. No. It's, it's, that's his baby.
Okay, so, that is great. I really think, I love the variety of ideas. And on the exhibition dance, what I was going to say, exhibition dance works best when there's someone who is a good person to announce and to describe the dance and their origin and all that. Then, it becomes not only a beautiful sight, but it becomes a cultural knowledge sharing. So, just a thought.
Thank you.
And if you need some help with an announcer, all that, we can help you with that. If you contact David Ennis, he would be a great source of information for you.
Again, I'm not the one running with all of these programs, but-
But whoever is in charge of that-
Correct.
Could contact him, because we have contacts already in place.
Awesome.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
So, Counselor Bengey?
Counselor Brown, I really like a lot of your ideas.
Collective ideas.
The farmer's market, tremendous, and it can work, everybody loves the farmer's market. And you can, you can isolate and social distance in a farmer's market. The outside sales, sidewalk sales for the businesses, good idea if we strapped off some of our parking along the front of the business, too, and utilized that area, if we can do that, if the woke or stiven allow us to do that.
What, can I add something? Would it be possible even to contact the RCMP to see if we could make an application to close the road the same way as we do when we have the parade for so many hours?
I think we just have to remember, some of the businesses are already doing it and have already done it in years past, but we also have to remember, those businesses are all about that parking, because we have lots of seniors that like to go, and you take off too much of that parking, and we're in trouble.
Not gonna walk.
Right? Like, you don't want to walk, right?
Yeah, you make, it makes total sense.
Exactly. So, I think, within reason, I think they're already doing it. I don't really think we need to push it much further than what they're already doing.
Hmm.
Now, your, your outdoor rodeo-
Correct.
That's, that's intriguing, but I'm just wondering about parking space and bleacher, you've only got one set or two sets of bleachers up there for the mud run, but an outdoor rodeo can be viewed from your car if they do it with an FM tune-in channel, such as Raymond did with their fireworks.
So, truthfully, on that, that's the Agro Dome's baby, and they're, they're, they will be compliant, and they will handle it.
Okay.
Is what I can say. Counselor Drew, did you want to add to that?
No, I just know that they have a whole bunch of things that they're working on, so-
Exactly.
And we can discuss that.
They'll be compliant, so I don't think that's something we need to worry about.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Brown.
I am excited. I just, I loved every idea. I think they're all great. I really like the decorating thing. I love the, the rock painting. I'll paint a rock.
Awesome.
No question. I'm not a very good painter, but I'll do it. But anyways, when we last talked about canceling the July the 1st, Jeff mentioned, well, we've got that money, we can put it together and double up for Heritage Days if we do go ahead with it. So, we've got the money there for the fireworks.
Oh, we, the fireworks, we do.
So, the budget is there-
Yep.
And we're all set.
Yep.
And I'm just excited about doing that as well. There wasn't one idea there that I didn't think was possible.
Thank you.
I mean, they're great.
Awesome.
Great work.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, we did not, we didn't keep the July fireworks budget in. That did come out, but we have the Heritage Week money in still.
Correct.
Okay.
We're not doubling up?
We don't have double, yeah. I mean, it'd be cool, don't get me wrong, but we didn't double it.
Nice try, though, thanks.
Yeah.
I particularly appreciate the fact that you're trying to represent through the activity the diversity of our community, and that's wonderful. Thank you.
I think one, one part that I would just like to say, and that is, I understand that the Blood Tribe has canceled a lot of their events, and they've been incredibly proactive, testing almost 4,000 people with COVID, and they've been super on top of it. But to all of the Blood Tribe members that I talked to, and I've talked to quite a lot in the last month, it was all about needing something, because I said, would it be offensive if the town of Cardston did this? Would you feel like we weren't supporting you? Would it feel like we were overstepping ourselves when the Blood Tribe is having this struggle, as we are, but they've got live cases? And time and time again, of course, I did not talk to Chief and Counsel, I didn't, but the people that I talked to from the Blood Tribe, they were very supportive and felt like it's all about hope, it's all about the two communities coming together and supporting each other and enjoying where we're at, rather than the anxiety and the sorrow of what we've really been living with. We need something.
Yeah. And so, kudos to you for that.
Thank you.
And one other thing, is I was reading yesterday, because I'm on this emergency committee, just reading yesterday, we have 43 cases of which, of COVID, in the Kynick Cardston region, 38 of them are recovered. We have three active cases, and we had one unfortunate death.
Correct.
But the percentages are, are really good, and people have been very active in taking those precautions. And I think with our advertising, we mentioned, you know, we need to continue to be proactive in our social distancing, and that's what it's all about.
Thank you.
And so, I think, I think it's totally possible to do everything that was presented, if that's what we choose to do.
Counselor Drew?
So, I just have a question regarding the Ag Society events. Do they need to apply to AHS to get their events approved?
Yeah. All of them do.
Everybody does.
And they know that.
I mentioned something on that. So, I just actually emailed Mike Swiston from AHS in the meeting here to see if him and I could meet maybe on Thursday or Friday to discuss the scope of it all. There's not an application per se. The local authority, we can, we can work with them on a lot of that, but in cases like with softball, for example, I sent their mitigation plan to AHS and said, hey, just so I don't misinterpret something here, are we okay with this? So, I think on some of these, on some of these, we would probably do that. We would ask for a mitigation plan submitted-
Agreed.
Just to make sure everything's cool.
And when we, when I talk to all of these people, they know that. They're fully aware.
Anniversary, possibly.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much. What would you like from council at this point? Do you want an-
I want you to vote yes.
You want a motion to approve-
I do.
The, this?
I do.
And that be to the, to the-
Yes.
I'm, I'm ready to propose a motion. I'll propose a motion that we go along with these activities as presented, as long as they are okayed through AHS. And the social distancing-
And within the budget.
And within the budget, presented within the budget. Jeff?
It's unusual for me to have a question after a motion, but do you mind?
No. We have not- We have not voted, so you're good.
Is it okay if I go through a few of these things just to hit, from administration's point of view? And I don't want it to sound to anyone like I'm trying to throw cold water on anything here, because I want to see it happen. But I just got a few logistics things.
Yep.
I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yep.
So, if that's fair. There's something to go back to my notes here. So, I do see a few of the events where we're gonna have to find some additional funding, not a lot, but a little bit. For example, if there are some prizes and giveaways for the painted rock piece, the drive-in movie will probably have a licensing fee. You know, those types of things, we usually see a, I don't want to say significant, but a few hundred dollar licensing fee.
Two hundred dollars.
Okay, so $200 for a licensing fee. The flagpole, we're waiting on quotes. But we're gonna look at some potential funding through the Powel grant from a couple years ago to potentially cover that, so hopefully that works okay. The First Nations exhibition dancers, the dancers and drummers will both require some compensation. So, and that can add up quickly when you get a number of people, so we just want to look at that.
When it is an exhibition, normally there is no money involved. But it will be an honorary.
Okay, but either way
Yeah.
either way, we're paying someone, yeah. So, we just have to consider it. Like I said, I think it's great. And I'd love to see, even if we did, however it played out, I've thought about even down on Main Street with some hand drummers and dancers and doing it where we take it to the people, right? That kind of a thing?
Love it.
There's a
This is what you've been doing in Bath, that's exactly what you're doing last night here in Bath, so.
Okay, okay. And then there's just a couple others. Again, as the director of emergency management, I just want to make sure we're clear. I always, there's two cautions I want us to be clear on. One is I don't want us to plan an event where we're asking for more than 200 people. Because that's the rule right now.
Yes.
So, I don't know how we, the semantics and the logistics of fireworks, for example. Because obviously, it's, I don't know the right location either necessarily, but we just have to look at how we're doing that. And I'll talk to AHS about all this too, because they're probably seeing this all over the place right now. So, fair enough. And then, so things like the outdoor rodeo where you have a distinct event where you shouldn't have more than 200 people, but you probably will in some way, and maybe not. Maybe they keep it contained to the first 180 people or whatever that get there or something, right?
Which is how they're talking.
Okay. And then I had one other thing. Oh, and I just would throw some caution out on the softball tournament. That's the one that worries me. You have made a distinct effort. We are turning away people who want to have tournaments in the community. We're telling them no
Yeah.
in the office. And then if we host one, it just puts us in a interesting position, that's all. I, I think it can be done safely. Our men's league has been excellent in showing what can be done. We could also host tournaments safely, but, but you as a group decided we wouldn't. And so, I just, I don't want to put us in a situation where there's a perception that we are accommodating some tournaments
And not others.
and denying others. That's my concern.
Go ahead councillor Brown and councillor Bangry.
My question on that, actually, it came up when we were looking at tournaments in general.
Yeah.
And especially the softball one. But some of the people were really pushing for it. And this was the question that they said to me. How is it then? Because I was initially saying, we're not doing softball. We'll do the pickleball, but we're not gonna do softball. And then the question arose and they said, how is it then you can do men's league?
Yeah. So, if I could, because your response was more political than it was logistical.
Yeah.
Your reasoning, in my interpretation, for not hosting tournaments was purely political, not regulatory.
Right.
Totally. It was in support of our needs.
Right.
That, that's the difference. You made a political statement, not a regulatory one. I think you can logistically accommodate one.
True. Well, we know we can.
Yeah, I'm not denying that at all. From a logistics point of view, the league is a little bit different because you do not have the convergence of multiple teams to the same facility at the same time. It's a one and done. Two teams come, play, go home.
Right.
At a tournament at Redford, for example, you have four teams on the ball diamonds and four more waiting to go on after them. So, just in players alone
You've molded their limits.
massive amount of people. And then they've got their family and kids and spectators and whatever. And so, you have this mass convergence when they change
Yeah.
times. So, it is more logistically complicated, doable, but you also made a political decision, not a logistical one.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Let me talk, let me talk to Ben tonight. We were talking about this last night, this very thing, and how they would set something up so they're not running it like a regular tournament. It would not be a family tournament, it would be people within the community, they might even pick the teams for them. So, I think we could space it out enough so that they're not bumping into each other like, like you're concerned about with the tournament. So, let me talk in tonight, see if we can come up with, I'll get back to you on that tomorrow.
I know.
You still have a political ramification to address.
I agree.
You do, you do.
I understand.
But I agree, I think we have enough diamonds in town that you wouldn't have to back-to-back them necessarily if you kept your numbers limited.
Correct.
No debate.
Correct.
Like I said, please don't interpret this as throwing any cold water. I think this is all awesome. And I want
No, I, I mean, you, you are right to speak about those things. We need to think about it, right?
Yeah, I just want to consider. That was my list of kind of little things to consider. We probably do need to find 3,000 bucks somewhere.
On that
Yeah.
So, FCSS, the board that I sit on, has a lot of funds available right now because they're not getting spent on a lot of the regular things that we normally had spent them on. And some of these things, like especially the First Nations dancing, we, because they're teaching and if we were to go with Tara and we might be able to get funding through them. So, it's not coming out of the tax, I mean, I guess it is coming out of the taxpayer because we're all
Yeah, but different pocket.
Right? I like this pocket better, right?
Or provincial.
Right? It's not my taxpayer, town of Cardston pocket, it's more FCSS. So, that, that's another area that we might be able to tap into.
Even the dancer, Jeff, do we still have the amount that was allocated to the power for this year in the budget?
No, we took that out.
Oh.
However, one of the pockets I thought probably exists. I had a chance to visit with one of the, the Ag Society board members, we were waiting to pick up our kids somewhere. And we, we allocate a significant amount to the Ag Society every year. And my bet is with a pared-down schedule, they won't need 14.5.
Agreed.
They might need eight.
Right.
All right.
Something like that. And that might free up, just within that, that, that celebration, that might free up five or six grand.
Okay.
Cover the rest.
All right. Okay, so that's
Yeah, the mud bog's terribly expensive for them, right? We know that's a big
That's not gonna be happening, is it?
No, that's not happening and the Chinook rodeos aren't happening either, the Indian Chinook rodeos, so.
Okay, councillor Bangry wants Sorry, councillor Bangry wants to say some?
I think we could pull this out all night long. But in my motion, I made it very clear that it had to be AHS, you know, depending on their and they are very proactive in, in looking at all angles of a, of a, of a policy and suggesting. They will suggest how, how we could do this softball tournament and, and the parameters done. So, I, I thought I covered it in the, in the motion and I appreciate, Jeff, what you're saying. There are some of these things which are, you know, you gotta be careful of.
Any other discussion or comments before we take a vote? No? Jeff, any last words?
No, I, I think it, it feels like you're about to approve this, so that's good. What'll happen, oh, again, I'm guessing. Please don't let me be presumptuous. But what I'm guessing is then after this, we need to, now comes the rubber hitting the road and, and all the logistical pieces. So, we'll need to engage with some staff on, starting to pull it together and, and putting some timeframes, for example, on the different events, getting us mitigation plans by I don't want to be doing this the Friday night of the event and getting mitigation plans in on that night. You know, starting to get all that formalized a little bit.
Okay, go ahead councillor.
Which is why we asked that this meeting be bumped up a week. Because everyone we talked to was like, I need a month. You gotta give us a month.
Right.
Between advertising and getting everything in place, we need a month.
Okay, can, can I just, councillor Bangry, can you give me a second?
You bet.
We have people in a gallery there that may have something to add before we take a vote. Do you need to come and share some idea or thoughts or concerns, Ennis?
No, my, my observation and my conclusion of all this is, this isn't the Cardston I know because you must have a hell of a lot of volunteers in the back that I don't know about that are coming forward and help you make all this happen. Because I've been on committees since for 40 years and it's usually two people doing all the work. So, it's exciting to see that you want to do all this, but who is gonna do it? Are you guys?
No, I've got the people.
Okay, I trust councillor Brown and her organizational skills. If somebody can pull it, she surely can. I believe that. And Dr. Strang, Andy, do you have any concerns?
We'll probably, you'll probably be talking about it a little later. The Pancake Breakfast is the place where I get involved with the Heritage Week and the Lions Club because of the fact that seven of the nine members who are over 70 years old have chosen to not do the Pancake Breakfast because we can't jeopardize our members.
Okay. So, I appreciate that concern. I just was listening yesterday to what they are doing in Calgary for rodeos a week. And in fact, the way they're doing it, they are doing it, which is amazing, but our pancake and the sausage and the syrup is put in a Styrofoam box and given to the people. In other words, there's no handling except by those who are cooking.
Our concern was that because of our location, there's absolutely no parking and there already is a huge traffic jam there.
Yeah.
We can't create a bigger one.
But
If it were over at the Extra Foods or down at the Carriage Lane Mall or wherever, where there is parking and less traffic jam, that would work.
I, I just was wondering exactly in that line of thinking, if all those who are involved normally in doing the Pancake Breakfast, instead of doing them every day, were doing one day, putting all their efforts and their volunteer together, could it possibly work? That is something you guys have to kind of figure out. I don't know.
I presume that's further down on the agenda.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
The other comment that I was going to make
Go ahead.
In, in passing, I heard Dr. Jones say, I'm going to do something when he was asked about the, the heavy horse pole, the driving contest and all of that.
Okay, well, that's good for the Ag Society to know. Dr. Jones will do something.
I've tried to contact Dr. Jones twice. We haven't been able to make contact yet on that.
Okay, well, go ahead, carry on.
The rest of this, all vengeful, great ideas. We'll have to see how it works out.
Thank you so much for your input, both of you. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the table and we have someone who wants to talk yet. Councillor Drew and councillor Bangry?
No, no.
Are you, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
I like, I like the idea. I just, I have huge concerns about social distancing.
Yeah.
If you look south of the border, the last five days, the first five days in July, they've had 250,000 new cases of COVID. And that continues to climb every day. If you've been to Costco in the last little bit, it's almost like playing hide-and-seek. People aren't social distancing, I have to stop, we have to move. People are just all over the place. This is gonna be an exciting time. And I just think that we really need to harp on the fact that we need to social distance because it just takes one or two people who have COVID in a, a group of 180 people and those people will go home and have their circle of influence. And all of a sudden, we're gonna have a lot of cases in the area. So, I just, I'm just a little concerned about, we're all thinking that COVID is gone, but in fact, it's sticking around. And I'm just, I'm just concerned about people's safety and that we're hosting this as a community. I just don't want to see people get sick, so that's just my concern.
So, that's a very good point. There is something, Jeff, that I'd like to get clarification on. The masks, are they coming? When?
Yes, the when is a little less sure, but definitely by August, there's no question. We're supposed to have them this week or next.
So, this is what I was wondering, is it possible to have even station where people can get a mask?
Yes, we have 12,000 masks coming in.
So, we will have plenty enough for the whole population of this town?
Yeah, they'll be in bags of eight. And we could have stations that are giving them out on Main Street and at, and at the bigger events to hand them out. I mean, we can have a great big debate about masks, but the point is we're getting a bunch.
So, for people, and, and the story's always the same. If you're too close to some other people, have a mask in your pocket, put it on when you don't feel safe. And that should be pretty well the rule to, to force people to wear masks, I'm not there. I think people have to take a little bit of initiative to know when it's appropriate for themselves to protect themselves and their family and those around them. Yes?
I think what we also have to remember is, if you're not comfortable, my parents are seniors, if they're not comfortable, they won't come. That's a little thing called free agency. And I'm not gonna take that away from them. So, if they choose not to, if they show up and there's a mask, you betcha. Or if they're proactive themselves, they'll have their own.
Right. Okay, so, it seems to me we have to vote. All in favor? Okay.
Yes.
Councillor Court, I'm not hearing you.
Said yes.
Yeah, a lot in favor.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't hear you. I'm getting a little hard of hearing, obviously.
I'll speak louder.
I actually would also like just take a moment and thank all the people that got ahold of me with their ideas, Candice Atwood and councillor Court. Because it took, it takes a village, it absolutely does. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I really think, great, great work. Thank you so much. Thank you all. Okay, so, this is one good thing. So
That sounds good, thanks Candice.
What exactly on this list would you like me to go through? The breakfasts?
So, can I say something?
Go ahead.
So, as far as the breakfast goes, I did talk to Dr. Strang in regards to this and they, of course, said just exactly what he said. And so, we actually, when we talked about it as our group, we just decided we didn't feel confident about handing food out. If in fact, a truck, a food truck or something one of these organizations wanted to have, that's on them. But we just didn't feel confident in having the Pancake Breakfast. We did talk to a lot of the businesses that normally do the weekly ones and they're not doing them.
Okay.
Which is why we pretty much just started Friday and Saturday with most of our things. Other than the rocks or the different things, what we were hearing from the businesses is they just didn't feel confident.
Okay. Well, if there is an agreement on themselves, then the, the breakfast is off.
Unless they want it, right?
Yeah, but it, it seems off to me and they are the one doing the work and I totally appreciate their concern. The age of the volunteer, all that, I totally appreciate that. So, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
So, then normally we have that family softball tournament. So, what councillor Court, can you help us with that?
Yes, when we were talking last night to Ben, who's been organizing it for the last several years, he felt obviously that it'll be from outside, we can't have the regular family tournament because people are coming from all over, from outside. Excuse me. So, he's hoping maybe on a limited basis, a limited number of teams, just people within town, maybe not even their softball big teams, but just people within town. I can talk to him more about that tonight and get back to Paul or Jeff tomorrow about that, exactly what he had in mind. And, but, but it would not be a regular family ball tournament where families come in from wherever. We know they're probably gonna be here, quite a few of them will be, but they won't be able to play ball as per se.
Okay. So, Ben is going to give us a few more information or share that with administration?
Yeah, I'll talk to him tonight and I'll, I'll text Paul or Jeff tomorrow about that.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you. Any other Ag Society events that we should know of?
So, they're talking about just doing a modified ranch rodeo. They're talking about a heavy horse pole, some extreme horse racing, but this is again, gonna be all outside. So, those are kind of the things that they've talked about. They're thinking about a pet show, but I'm not really sure how that but I'm not really sure how that would work. I do have a meeting on Thursday, so I'm sure we'll talk more about that, but that's kind of the direction. Everything's going to be outside. I would assume that they would have to, if there's a 200-person limit, they would have to have counters and let people in, and hopefully, yeah, that's probably what'll happen, so.
When we talked to Larry Scow, who is their president, when we talked to him, one thing that he said was, in order to not have 200 people, because you have to remember, in a rodeo, you've got your timers, you've got your shoot guys, like, it adds up quickly.
Right, yeah.
And so he said, in order to not have those numbers, that they would do timed event. So you would be told.
Rough stuff.
Exactly. So you would be told, you know.
Exactly when you're going to go there.
Cowboy Drew, you're at 2:00. You know what I mean? Like, everybody would have their set time, so we wouldn't have everybody there at one time.
Near the chute and all that, yeah.
That's what they were thinking.
Yeah.
Is what made sense. And what is being done in other areas, he said.
Go ahead.
One thing that we're going to have to look at for all these events as part of their contingency is they're going to have to have a weather contingency.
Yeah.
Because the Ag Society in particular, you can't plan a 200-person event and then try and move it inside because the weather went bad, because now your number's 50.
Right.
Yeah.
So the contingency for weather for many of these might just be that it's off, unfortunately.
Yep.
Because it's going to be difficult to manage now. The other wild card here is
on July 21st, we don't know what things look like. That's the next kind of change as far as discretionary travel, or at least they're going to be reviewing it.
Right, yeah.
So we don't know when stage three comes in. We don't know what happens with travel for people across the border. It could be quite a different environment by then. I'm doubtful it will be much different, but it could be. So I think as part of the contingency plans, even with Janet for the farmer's market, what if it's pouring rain? You can't move all that into the promenade of the Remington Museum.
No.
It won't work. So now what? So we just need, we can try and make sure, for example, that the ice rink potentially is open as a farmer's market, or, we can look at things like that for our facilities too, but it'll have to be addressed.
Agreed.
Okay, so that's part of the package deal that I have to submit to the town.
Yeah.
All right. The parade, who is?
We'll hear from the Rotarians on that.
The Rotarians are going to kind of.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
They'll have.
I mean.
They're handling it. Whatever that looks like, we don't know, right?
Yeah.
Like, they're just handling it. They said they're doing.
Some of them, they didn't get very good feedback from the Raymond.
That's why they're looking at tweaking it a little different.
Need to figure out a different model. All right.
I thought the Raymond one worked very well. I was there. Anyhow.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
So I thought the Raymond one worked very well. I was there. It seemed like it worked very well.
You see, it depends who you talk to, right?
I guess so.
I think with most of these, the thing you have to remember is that.
It's different.
This isn't going to be Cardston days as normal, because guess what?
Totally different.
That's not where we're at. Where we're at is nothing or something tweakish, right?
Yeah.
Is, are we all sad we can't have a Pancake Breakfast? Absolutely. That's fabulous, and I love it. They do a fantastic job.
Yeah.
But we can't. Am I sad that we're not going to have all of these things? Absolutely. But are we trying to just, it's a tweak. So for me, when I hear people bash on a new way of doing something, I get frustrated because I know of what it took to do it.
Well, it's because I compare to what I used to, right?
But you can't. Apples to oranges.
Yeah, yeah. No, I totally agree with you, Counselor. Totally agree. It takes a new mindset to appreciate what will happen. So thank you. Thank you for, and thank you to all your group for all what they did for us. And we'll carry on doing until Heritage Week comes. All right, so we have other items on the agenda. The financial implication, we already spoke of it. As long as we are within the budget, we should be happy. 7B, a tip interest. As always, we need to kind of set the interest rate for those who pay their taxes on a monthly basis. And you can see that in the recommendation that was made, we're lining ourselves up with other communities in Lesbridge in particular, and we have a rate recommended of 0.75% interest return for those who pay tip. So what we need is a motion to approve this. Counselor Scow?
Make a motion to lower the tip interest rate for the 2020, 2021 year to 0.75%.
Thank you. Questions? Al in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you. So the next one is a very interesting situation of someone who had a house that was under construction, and the house was assessed as if completed because the assessor was not able to access that property and see the degree of completion. So unfortunately, the year that the house was first of all assessed for taxes, the taxes were fully paid as if the house was completed. A year later, the taxpayer realized, my goodness, what happened there? I'm assessed very high. Why? And when they talked to the assessor, the assessor realized that obviously it had to be some kind of reconciliation to the fact that the house is still not complete. The problem is with the MGA, and the way we can fix the problem is through council. So council can readjust retroactively what happened two years ago, because normally you only have six months to see the changes for administration to do so themselves. When it's beyond that delay, we have to get involved. But in that case, I think that fairness is fair. That person paid too much tax the first year the house was assessed and should be reimbursed. I don't think there is any idea in my mind that should be any different.
Just for your information, prior to Mr. Lacy's passing, he asked me to come and look at that house, as he was considering having us sell it for him. So Mr. Bright and I went through that house, and when, he apologized as soon as he walked in. He said, this house is not complete yet. And we walked through that whole house, and we estimated there was probably $80,000 or more that needed to be done to complete the work inside. So my feeling, and Mrs. Lacy is totally justified in her request, because I've seen it with my own eyes.
Thank you for giving us that. Are you prepared to make a motion?
I am very prepared to make that motion, that we approve the request from Mrs. Peggy Lacy for a refund of a portion of the 2019 taxes at 272 Third Street West due to the error in assessment.
To 528.30?
Yes.
A refund of 528.30?
Right.
Dollars. Okay. Questions? I think it's a no-brainer, that one. Al in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. As for this committee meeting, we're done.
Yep.
Al in?
I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Al in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming.
Thanks, Counselor.
Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor.
Bye-bye.
See you.
Thank you.
Thank you.